Fourteen hundred. S three G nine fifty. Z one B nine seventy. Z two A nine eighty-eight. Z three O nine fifty. E three T fifteen fifty. S two Y seventeen fifty. I three S nine hundred. S two Y seventeen fifty. Do we have a bingo?
Bingo!
How many bedrooms was that, two thousand?
It's a two-bedroom.
The next is a two-bedroom.
Two-bedroom.
The corner apartment. Uh, question. Seventeen fifty?
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Before we have any questions, um, is that all of them?
That's, that's... It's all the leases, but you still have rollovers.
Okay, uh, let me, let's just get a motion out of the way. Uh, we need a motion to approve all the actions of the Sales and Lease Committee. Approve the report and ratify all the actions taken by the Sales and Lease Committee as read. Uh, and waiving the, the rollovers. We need a motion to that effect. Do we have that motion?
Yeah, I didn't hear anything about deny.
Okay. So Murat makes the motion. I'll second it. And, uh, okay, now we can proceed to board. Any board discussion before we open it to the floor for the, uh, membership? Hearing none. Marcy, did you have a question?
Oh yeah, my question is, uh, um, okay. One Y for seventeen hundred dollars in the, in the St. Moritz. I think that's a mistake. For seventeen hundred dollars, that's the smallest one bedroom.
It's a one-bedroom, right, yeah.
Yeah, that's the small one in the center. Seventeen fifty? Sounds like a mistake to me.
We have a Sales and Lease member here. Uh, we have a Sales and Lease Committee member who's saying it's, it's not incorrect. It's correct.
Seventeen fifty. That's the first one?
Yeah, Harry?
So, um, in the Heidelberg, somebody sold a one M apartment for eighty thousand dollars.
That's amazing.
I wanna put my apartment up for sale.
Wait. Somebody sold a hundred and... What was that, that one bedroom? A hundred and two, a hundred and...
A hundred and twelve.
Hundred and ten.
A hundred and ten.
That was a three-bedroom.
No, the hundred and ten was for the three T on the Heidelberg.
That was a three, that was a three-bedroom. A hundred and eight was a two-bedroom.
There was one bedroom. How much was the one bedroom?
Uh, you had sixty-six thousand, seventy-four-nine. Yeah, that's it.
It was sold for seventy-four.
Oh, no, you had a, a seventy and a sixty-eight thousand also.
I didn't even hear no deny.
Uh, Harry has another question.
And how many apartments do the village now own? And how many of them are being rented?
Dan, do you have that number off the top of your head? I think it's in the...
No, I don't, but I'll, I'll find out. I'll get it for you.
I think it's like six or so. Six or seven.
We have four apartments renting, we have three for rent.
Okay, so it is seven.
Seven apartments.
Yeah. Okay, so, uh, we have a motion and a second on the table. Do we, um, have any, any objection to the motion? Hearing none, it's approved. Next item is the... No, we, we already heard this. They, they, we just waived the reading. Next item is the Yorkshire Compactor. I understand the... Let's see, we have a couple of bids on that. Do we have, how many bids do we have on that, Dan? I, I see one for, for forty-two forty.
You just have one at this time. As I said, I'm looking for others, but, uh, yes, that was, that was...
Is this an urgent thing, or can, can we table it as we...
It's, it's working at this point, but it's, it really needs to be replaced. It's forty-two.
Do you, do you think that we can get a couple of, uh, better bids?
It's not working now.
It's not working now?
Yeah, we pull it manually. It's nasty pulling out. Every day the garbage, it's not working.
So we've tried to get other bids, but we haven't...
They hasn't gotten back to me at this point, but I will call them tomorrow and find out what's the hold of it.
Okay, what we can do in the meantime is make a motion, uh, to approve spending no more than this particular amount. Uh, if none of the other bids come back lower, then we would approve this particular contract, um, by a certain date. George, you're saying, how long can we wait? How long?
Uh, we can't.
We can't? Okay.
It's impossible.
So let's give it...
Every day we pull it out. Every day we, the people put the garbage in there.
Let, let's give it twenty-four hours. I mean, Dan, let's get, really, um, get on, on their case about giving you a bid right away. Uh, so we need a motion basically to the effect that we, um, approve spending up to, you know, it's forty-two forty?
Yes.
Forty-two forty, uh, to replace the Yorkshire, the Yorkshire, uh, Compactor. Um, yeah, and, uh, to approve, um, awarding the bid to SNS Inventive Technologies unless any other bid comes in lower, um, within the next twenty-four hours.
You'll get bugged if you don't do it fast.
Okay. So, uh, is there a motion to that effect? Okay, Compactor, the motion I just read is, uh, for SNS Technologies at forty-two forty? Or lower if another bid comes in lower. So Murat made the motion. Is there a second? I seconded it.
Are the other people on the phone sleeping?
I'm not sure. But anyway, um, is there any discussion on the board? Any questions from the membership? Any objection, hearing none, it's approved. Next item is, uh, the Marseille Fire Panel. Dan, can you explain that, Adam?
I, yeah, we, when I, when I started here, it, it was handed to me that this fire panel needs to be replaced. Uh, I, again, I've called a couple of companies about it. I have not gotten responses back. Again, the last week or so, the, the office was crazy because of that, that bug. Today, the phones went out, we had a lot of problems. But the one for the fire panel for the Marseilles is for three thousand nine hundred and seventy-five.
Okay, how urgent is that one?
Well, if your fire panel's not working and you have a fire, you're gonna be in deep trouble.
And if you have this thing, this thing, you know how big this muck is, so you know you're gonna hit it.
I live there too, so we, we both go down.
No, no, we don't go down. I guarantee you.
I'll just do it. No, so let's, how about the same, uh, motion for this one? Have we tried to get other bids?
Yes, I have called companies.
Okay, so let's do the same thing. May, maybe they tried emailing you while the bug was, um, you know, doing it. So make sure you call, you call, uh, both company, or all the companies to do this tomorrow.
I'm gonna call, I'm gonna call the other companies with us. It says Central Security.
Uh-huh.
I will call...
Okay, great, great. So in the meantime, um, we need a motion basically to, uh, approve spending no more than thirty, thirty-nine hundred and seventy-five dollars for the Marseille Fire Panel replacement, uh, with armor protection unless we can get a lower bid within the next twenty-four hours.
Forty, forty-two hours.
Forty-two hours, okay. Forty, forty-two hours, we have a motion to that effect? Okay, Murat makes the motion. Is there a second? I'll second it again.
Hey, John, if, if they, if they get, get it approved, you know, to buy it, how long does it take before it gets installed?
About a week, a week.
Okay.
A week, so.
And is that also including the Compactor? It's gonna take that long to get a Compactor here? I mean, we don't want both.
Well, the Compactor, you know, you gotta realize you got, I mean, they'll get it here within four or five days. They gotta pull the other one out and install the new one, so you're looking at probably a little bit more than a week. Till it's, it's up and running again.
Okay. Uh, in the meantime, there is a sign, I believe, next to the fire panel that states that, uh, you must call nine-one-one.
That's we have to tell everybody, we put a note in there. Any, anybody has smoking a fire, smoking cigarettes, smoking anything, you have to call the maintenance or call nine-one-one, please, for now.
Right, okay. But there, there is a sign there currently to let people know that just pulling that will not alert the fire department that they must call nine-one-one. Okay? Right. Uh, that's why we're trying to take care of this as soon as possible. That's why we're taking care of this. Forty-two hours. Let's see, so the next item on the agenda is, uh, the outdoor pool recirculation pump. And I understand that, uh, the bid that we received was for, uh, eighteen hundred thirty-two dollars and seventy-four cents?
Exactly, yes.
Okay, so we need to appro, we need to ratify that, right? Um, so I need a motion to ratify the, uh, bid from Rice Pump Motor and Repair to, uh, for the outdoor recirculation, to replace the outdoor recirculation pump. At a cost again of eighteen hundred thirty-two dollars and seventy-four cents. Murat, Murat? No, that's the one that was approved. It had to be done, it was an emergency. So, um, okay, so Murat makes the motion on the pool, the pool pump? Is there a second?
I second it again.
Louis seconds it?
Louis actually says, oh, he's awake.
Okay. Um, the next item?
When will that be?
I'm sorry, though, we have a six second?
When is that pump gonna be?
It's already gone in. It was an emergency, so we're ratifying it.
Oh, so it's already in?
Yes, I believe it is, yes. So is there...
No more water coming out?
We pulled, we pulled yesterday. Not this morning.
Yeah, I have, I have talked to about the heater.
I was in there this morning.
That, that's not the, that's not the pump we're talking about. This is, recirculates the water through your filters.
Right.
That's the pump that we put in.
Okay, and what about the heat?
That's what I have to find out.
Okay, the slide was the heater. See, we, we have the pool closed almost three, four days.
We don't have...
The water is down. We don't have circulation for heating. Now we put a pump on, it's not running now, it's gonna heat it for tomorrow, maybe one more day it's on.
Oh, 'cause I went in today, the pool was...
It's a lot of water, it's not a lot of water.
He's, he's saying that...
I understood what you said.
Within, oh, okay, I didn't know if you heard him. I didn't think you, I knew you understood him, I just wasn't sure that you heard him.
So another couple of days, okay.
Hopefully, hopefully less.
Okay, so, um, we have a motion and a second on the table. Is there any discussion on this item? Louis, you have a question?
I do. Um, we recently, if you want to remember approving something related to that, have Daniel, you know, looking to at least, you know, in the last five months, you know, is there a repair, is there not there? You now remember, we, we already invented some money there, no pumps.
Actually, let me ask George. George, do you recall any work on, on the outdoor pool, um, in the last several months?
Hmm, no. The last month, we approved...
Last several months, not last month.
We approved a couple, we already approved or buy the new, new tank for the filter. You remember? We not doing, you know, what's necessary for the now, it's running okay.
Oh, okay.
Last month is approved. Anything happen with the, with the filter box, we have to change, the money is approved.
Can you talk into the phone? I'm not sure if he can hear you. Can you talk into the mic? You can hear it? Okay. Okay, let's talk into the mic anyway in the future, so to make sure that people on the phone can hear you.
I'm gonna do, do yours. Okay, uh, this, we have problems in the pump. Especially the filter system we have is too old. It's almost forty years old. You have to change this tank already. We have a proposal for, uh, almost, uh, thirty thousand dollars for the companies. Another was twenty. Uh, we approved the last time for ten thousand. Buy the pump from the, from the company sales. And put the pump in some big deal, we'll spend probably another five or one thousand dollars more. And we gonna put it, we have it ready for putting. But we don't wanna put it now, but it's working fine. That's any time it's gonna happen, we have to buy. This, this budget is approved, ready for buy.
So you're saying what we, what we approved previously was not done? Is that what you're saying?
No, we not, we not, it's not done. We not use it this month, not yet.
We didn't use it?
No.
We never, did we purchase it?
No, we not buy it.
Okay.
We only have the proposal ready for buy and we have the price in the quote.
So we didn't buy that, but we're buying this one?
Yeah, it's almost ten thousand dollars.
I mean, was it a good investment versus the other one? Was it cheaper?
No, it's, that's the best prices.
Okay.
And the label we do it.
So, um, there's a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion on the board on this one? Uh, membership?
George, is that a pump that fails without notice? The one that you, you, we have money in escrow, so to speak, for it in case it breaks?
Yeah, that's it.
It just goes, right? It doesn't say, I'm fixing to break, it just breaks.
But the break is, we know it's breaking, we gonna put it.
I know, but we don't know.
We want to know if there's any, any way to tell before it breaks.
No, I may not count. When we have, when we have leakings, that's the time is the chance. It's not leaking anything like that. The leak is approved, it's not good, the time. It's, uh, the, the tank is metal. Okay, that's the tank is metal. It's not gonna explode, it's gonna leak in if one's happened, broken. That's, we know it's broken, we know, I'm okay welding. We have to take the tank and put a new tank.
John, was that money put in escrow?
Approved.
I suppose so.
You suppose?
That's what you were just told, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, um, so we, we have a motion and a second on the table for this item. Uh, is there any objection? Hearing none, it's approved. The next item on the agenda is to set the dates for the November and December regular meetings is, uh, let's see. So let's take a look at the calendar for November. Um, normally, we do this every year to avoid conflicts with the holidays and, uh, I don't know, let's see. Does anybody have a calendar in front of them?
I don't.
Hold on.
I have a calendar.
Okay, I'm looking for mine here.
The last Tuesday of the month is the twenty-ninth.
Okay. The last Tuesday of the month is the twenty-ninth. Normally we, normally we do it on the fourth Tuesday, so I believe November has five. So it'll be the twenty-second. Um, that would be two days before Thanksgiving. Does anybody have any travel plans? Carl, are you gonna be in town? Are you gonna be in town that week? The twenty-second? That's the Tuesday, yeah. November twenty-second, Tuesday before Thanksgiving? Are you gonna be? You're gonna be here? Okay. Anybody have travel plans that week? Where they won't be available?
No, not really, I'm good.
You're good too?
What about, what about our esteemed board members?
Anybody on the board have any problem with the twenty-second, which would be the fourth Tuesday of November? Louis, you, you okay with that? November twenty-second, that's the Tuesday before Thanksgiving? Hearing no objection.
Will anybody be cooking, so I don't have to...
Yeah. Dove, Dove, you okay with, Dove, are you okay with that date? Hearing no objection there either. Okay. Um, anyway, uh, they're multitasking. So we need a motion and a second for setting the, uh, regular meeting date, well, it would be the normal date of the fourth Tuesday of the month, which would be the twenty-second at seven fifteen. Um, does anybody wanna make that motion? Murat makes the motion. November twenty...
And you're approving?
Louis is right here, he seconds it.
Can we go over curtain?
December, it's twenty-seventh.
And then December would be...
Twenty-seventh.
Let's see. Um, yeah, the twenty-seventh. That would be, that would be two days after Christmas. Anybody on vacation during the week after Christmas or the week you are? You're gonna be gone? What about the week before? What about the twentieth, the week before, the, the week before Christmas? The twentieth? December twentieth? When do you leave?
I leave around the twentieth to somewhere around the third of Jan, January.
Around the twentieth, do you know the exact date?
Only you can check this out later.
Well, that is, the twentieth is before Christmas. Do you know the exact date? It's the twentieth, you're leaving on the twentieth?
Twentieth?
Yeah, do you wanna have the twentieth or you leaving before the twentieth?
The week...
The twentieth is good? Okay.
On New Year's.
So, um, does anybody have any problem with the twentieth? It's the Tuesday before Christmas. Which is the third Tuesday.
They all hung up. They all hung up.
Are you okay with that? We need, we need you at Santa Claus, come on, we need, we need you.
Hey, John, John, can you not just tell them this is the date that they have to have the meeting and that's it?
There you go. So, um, I just, I just need a motion just to make it official. So, uh, can we get a motion to make it the twenties, uh, December the twenty-second for the December meeting?
What was, like a motion?
Twenty-second?
First year.
I'm sorry, I apologize, that was the, that was the, uh, November. December the twentieth. For December the twentieth. Murat and Louis, do you wanna move and second that as well to make it part of your motion for November twenty-second meeting?
Yes.
Louis?
Hello?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay. Okay, so it's a double motion, November twenty-second and December twentieth. Those are the two dates, okay? Uh, is there any objection? Hearing none, it's approved. The next one is to set the date for the budget meeting. Our controller, Campbell, has informed us that he's available basically on the sixth. So it has to be on December the sixth for that one. So, um, let's get a motion and a second on that one as well. The budget meeting, December sixth. Murat and Louis, you wanna move, move and second that one?
December sixth?
December sixth?
Yeah.
Okay. Murat moves it. Louis, you wanna second that? Okay. So everybody, mark your calendars, the budget meeting is on the sixth. Our controller, Brad Campbell, will, Brad from Campbell, Brad Vogt from Campbell will be here to answer all your questions about the budget, financials, um, all that stuff, okay? So December sixth. No objection? Hearing none, it's approved. We're up to good in welfare?
I am.
Let me see. Yes, Marcy?
Okay. No, I don't need to stand you, I'm sure you can hear me. They have, um, a wall that was put up where Carlos, where Louis's apartment is because supposedly the light was entering his son's apartment. Now, that is a violation. Because all he had to do was get blackout curtains or blinds. Uh, there was no permit issued for that. There is no permit for the cameras in the halls. Do you have permits issued for these things, please?
We're working.
They're working on it?
We're, I have to get an electrician in here. I've already spoken to the city and, and about the, uh, the permits for that. And they told me all I need to do is have an electrician certify it, and then we can put in the, uh, the permit, uh, applications. I'm waiting for the electrician to show up.
But that's after the fact. That's after the fact. These cameras were put in a while back, and the city is aware of that. And I know that it's down in the courthouse that, uh, there's a fine, there's a fine.
No, we haven't received any fines.
You haven't received fines? Well, I went to the courthouse, I saw there was fines. There was no fines?
We, I have not re, if, maybe the previous manager got something. I have found nothing that says that there's a fine.
What can you do there?
I think a fine, I think there was a fine last year that was paid for one of the buildings that they had an issue with. Um, we addressed that building. Um, so I think they may have come back and they, they had an issue with one or two or more of the buildings.
And what about the wall?
The, you mean, okay.
There is no permit.
You're talking about the, the fence in front of the Nottingham? Okay.
Yes, there is no permit issued for that.
I don't know the status of that. I think, I'm not sure if we went back to the city and got a permit after the fact. I, I'm not sure what happened with that.
That's also down in the city.
Um, yeah, we, let's get an update on that. We'll try to get an update on that.
Why, why is, why was he given permission to put a wall up?
For people not to walk on the grass?
He was not given permission. He did it on the dome.
I mean, you know, he tells me he's a board member, so he could have the people that work here put plants up for him and do things like that. You know what? You know what? If you're on the board, you don't get special.
It wasn't for him.
It does appear, okay, as an absence of understanding fiduciary responsibility. It does appear, I'm not saying that, it just appears like using position on the board to get special things done for yourself. It might not have happened otherwise.
Not supposed to.
That's what it appears.
But this came up at several meetings ago.
Yeah, we recall discussing this.
To extend the fence further down. There was a long discussion about it, several, several...
Yeah, um, my, my understanding was that there was a security component to that. Um, and that's the explanation that we were given.
Security? What do you mean security? Wouldn't you explain to your, can you, can you explain?
So, so the people would not walk on the grass and, uh, circumvent the, circumvent the gate?
What happens with all the other apartments that have that? That same kind of, uh, you know, where you can walk around the, uh...
You can't, because, uh, that one, it blocks the, the whole side of that Nottingham building. All the way up to the one unit that has the walkway. So I believe that was the reason.
Okay. I heard that the reason was because the lights were coming in into the bedroom.
That's not the reason that the board heard, so, I mean, you know, if that's what you heard, then I would, I would welcome you to talk to the board member and maybe you can discuss it. I don't know, but all our, our emails are all, uh, listed on the, in the mailroom, so I encourage you, you know, if you wanna continue that discussion with the board member, then you can do, do so. Okay. Um, next, uh, next person is the, uh, okay, is Alice, Alice?
Yes. I don't think I need a mic either. One of, uh, a couple of things...
Just so you know, it's not being picked up, um, on the video, but that doesn't bother you. I mean, the video and the audio, so. But that's okay, go ahead. If it doesn't, if it doesn't bother you, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I have several things, but some of them have been covered already. But one thing that I would question, and especially now hearing about the rentals and the sales, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, I would like at the next boardment, uh, next, next meeting that we be given a number. How many rental u, units in the village are rented? Because I think, well, they'll have to be owned by somebody, but I want to know, I want to know how many rentals are here. Because if this is turning into a rental community, which it is already appearing and it's just getting worse by the month, perhaps, you know, it's time for people to make other arrangements for their living. You know, owners who are living here, who have been happy here, but if they don't wanna live in a rental community, and everybody knows renters do not care for property the way an owner will care. And the owners that are renting, they wanna collect the rent and the rents are going up, up, up. We all see that, and it's in the newspaper, so we're all aware of that. I don't fault them, but it leaves other people in kind of a vacuum. So I would like to know how many re, rented units we really have in the village. Because if somebody owns it and they are in it, that doesn't concern me. I wanna know how many renters are here.
What percentage is it? Fifty-five percent?
No.
Fifty-five percent.
But, uh, Dan, do you think we could get, uh, maybe by the time of the next meeting?
Sure.
Okay.
My, my understanding, and we'll check it, but someone told me that you have twenty-five percent renters.
No, 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 that was, that was before, that was before.
I will, I will check into, I'll check into it.
Thank you, thank you.
You see, that's what we need to stress for people, because we have to guess. We have to guess, and we look to the association as two jobs. The first one is to protect our property values, and the second one is to negotiate maintenance things at a cost we can all share. To keep our cost of living and our cost of ownership under control. It's, this is what we do as an association. We protect our investment, and we make life affordable. When we get vulnerable, when there are so many, well, first of all, we're, we're running out of villagers. We really are. How many people come to the meeting? We don't have anybody living here who's qualified. Where are everybody on the phone and half a dozen that live here? So this can be a very unnerving thing, this is, this is my property, I wanna live here.
Okay, yeah, just to, um, well, of course, Dan is brand new, so, uh, most of you probably are familiar with the history. Uh, the twenty-five percent cap was removed in twenty-twelve, I, I believe, twenty-eleven or twenty-twelve, right around, right around that time. Then, we also, we, um, also had at that time a, uh, one, the one-year rental prohibition. That was also removed in twenty-twelve, unfortunately. Um, that was all, I believe, all this happened when AMG was the, uh, management company, I believe. Um, certainly, the tw, the, uh, the, the one year, the first year rental cap certainly was removed during that time. Um, for the record, I think it was a bad idea, you know, uh, clearly, it was a bad idea. That's when things started going south in terms of a lot of renters moving in, 'cause it was so easy for them to come in. So, uh, you know, fortunately, as I announced several months back, the, um, moratorium is now over. And the sales and lease committee, as Dan mentioned, is being very strict in terms of enforcing that. We are getting some pushback from some of the investors, including our good friend Doug Myers, as you probably have heard, threatening lawsuits and so forth and so on. But anyway, we, we are holding firm despite those threats.